So, good afternoon. My name is Lowell Rubin-Bon. I am the manager of Government Relations. On behalf of the City of Brampton, I want to welcome all of you here today at Council Chambers, as well as all those joining us online via Facebook Live. We are happy to have Mayor Patrick Brown, Regional Councillor Santos, Regional Councillor Vicente, Regional Councillor Paleshi, along with Joseph Patari, the City's interim Chief Administration Officer, with us today, to hear your questions and comments. Before we begin, I just wanted to give a little bit of the rules of engagement for today. We are going to begin with opening remarks by the mayor, followed by a short presentation about the regional government review process. Then, we will hear what's most important from you. We're going to start by those who registered previously to speak here today, and then this will be followed by those comments that we receive either through Facebook Live and from others in the audience here today. As a point of reference, the Town Hall is scheduled to end at 5:00 PM. Also, we have an online survey on the city's website that is open until May 13th. You can access it via going to brampton.ca/regionalgovernmentreview. There are also printed copies for those of you who are here in person that you can fill out at the front desk. A little bit about the regional government review. Earlier this year, the province of Ontario began reviewing regional governments to ensure municipal and regional governments are working as effectively and efficiently as possible, and can continue to provide the vital services that communities depend on. Brampton is one of three municipalities within the region of Peel, and the options that the city is discussing is whether we split, merge, or stay with the region of Peel. We'll get into a bit more details in a few minutes. Today's Town Hall is just one more way that Bramptonians are engaging with residents about your views on this important subject, and to answer any questions you may have. At this point, I would now like to invite Mayor Brown to address the audience.
Thank you, Lowell, and thank you to Councillor Wena Santos for joining us, Councillor Paul Vicente, Councillor Michael Paleshi, and our CEO, Joseph Patari. This is an important conversation we're having, and a little bit of background on this. Premier Doug Ford earlier this year announced that he was doing a review of regional governments across the province of Ontario, not just the region of Peel, but regions across Ontario. As you know, a similar exercise happened in the mid-1990s, when then-Premier Harris did a review of municipal governance that ultimately led to some megacities. A similar process went underway in Quebec that actually led to megacities, and then led to those megacities breaking up. We're not sure the direction the province is going to go, but we believe it's important, given the fact that we're supposed to give our feedback by May 21st, that when we give our feedback to the province, it's rooted on what the citizens have said. Ultimately, we were elected in October, but this council has a pretty dedicated principle that we want to engage with the public when big decisions happen. We've had a Teletown Hall on this topic as well. Thanks to the marvel of modern technology, we had a Teletown Hall that had 5,000 people participate. But we also wanted to make sure that not only would we have a Teletown Hall, not only would we reach out for online correspondence, that we'd actually have an old-fashioned, in-person Town Hall for all those that wanted to participate. And we realize this is in the middle of your weekend, but I want to thank you for being here and taking an active interest in your local democracy. The region of Peel was created in 1974 by a Bramptonian, actually, by former Premier Bill Davis. At the time, Bill Davis thought it was important, when it comes to the cost of certain services, that we pool those costs to protect the interests of taxpayers. Now, I'm a little biased on this, because I am a huge fan of former Premier Bill Davis, and felt that there was a lot of wisdom to what he undertook. But it's always important to be reflective and to look at how we can better serve constituents. And that's why we don't mind this process, because it makes us take a hard look at our operations and make sure that we're really putting taxpayers first. To give you a little bit of information on the research that's been done so far, Mississauga did a financial analysis in 2003, and so some of the numbers that they've been using the public are a bit dated. The region of Peel certainly looked very different in 2003. There is a more recent report done by Deloitte, which was done in early 2019, and that's the most recent data we have. The report from Deloitte really highlighted that Mississauga's numbers were flawed, and that it would actually cost taxpayers more in Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladon. It actually said pretty clearly it would result in significant tax increases in Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladon, so it wouldn't be a hardship for one municipality, it would be a hardship for all three municipalities that are part of the region of Peel. On their estimates, on Deloitte, which is an expert in these type of financial configurations, under the Deloitte analysis, the dissolution would cost taxpayers an additional $1 billion over 10 years, and a megacity an additional $600 million over 10 years. You may ask why it would cost more. One of the benefits of the region of Peel is that we share some services. We share the cost of services like the water treatment centre. That water treatment centre down Lake Ontario, Mississauga, Brampton taxpayers have helped build. Your taxpayer dollars have gone into the construction of that facility, and water treatment isn't cheap. We've got a state-of-the-art facility that's one of the best in the country, and your taxes have helped build that. We've collectively, Calladon, Mississauga, and Brampton, built that facility. You look at the Peel Police, we've invested a lot into having a modern police force, and the Peel Police, there is a cost shared by residents in Mississauga and Brampton. Sure, you could have two separate police forces, but, you know, I think the original rationale when this was created was that crime doesn't stop at municipal borders, and where there is a pooling of resources, you can have a greater impact. The waste management is done regionally, and so we get a better value by having a larger contract. And that's one of the reasons, one of the many reasons, when Deloitte looked at the financial analysis, if you were to get rid of the region of Peel and have all regional responsibilities paid for individually by municipalities, there would be a significant cost on taxpayers. Those who have argued in favor of the dissolution of the region have, in Mississauga made arguments that they want to be independent, they want to have sole discretion over how those joint funds are managed. This is all something to consider. Some people who have argued for a megacity would say it would, a city of Peel might give us more clout. There are advantages and disadvantages to these different possibilities of an independent Brampton, without a region of Peel, a megacity, or keeping the status quo. So today is really about getting your feedback. I would note, we've been joined by Councillor Gerpreet Dillon, thank you for being here today, and Charmaine Williams is en route as well, another Brampton councillor. But the focus of today isn't to give you a speech about our thoughts, today is really about listening to you. We always say around the council table that we have 650,000 bosses, and that's the residents of Brampton, and we want to hear from you, the people that we work for. And so, we're going to open this up to a discussion. We have some pre-registered questions, and actually, we're going to have Lowell do a presentation on a little bit of the structure behind this, and then we're going to open it up for questions. And so Lowell, please proceed with a short presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I promise this is not a speech, this will be more on the technical side from what we've learned from the province so far. So as the mayor already said, the province has formally launched its expected review of eight regional governments, Halton, York, Durham, Waterloo, Niagara, Peel, Muskoka District, and Oxford County, as well as the County of Simcoe and all their lower-tier municipalities. So this is not just focused on what's happening in the region of Peel. What the province is specifically looking on, or looking at, are ways to improve the governance structures, reforms to promote better representation and decision-making, and ways to improve the quality, and hopefully more importantly, to find ways to reduce the costs and overlap of municipal services. We understand that recommendations from the special advisers are expected to be delivered to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing sometime in the summer of 2019, and our anticipation is that a decision will follow shortly thereafter. A common question we get is, "Who does what?" So on the left-hand slide that you'll see before you, you'll see some of the services that are provided by the city, so things like arts and culture, by law enforcement, transit, fire, recreation, parks, and economic development. These are all services that are delivered by the City of Brampton. On the right side, you will see what the region is responsible for. Areas such as ambulatory services, delivering public health, water, wastewater, waste collection and recycling, along with affordable housing, and support services for social services. And it goes without saying, there are some common or duplicate services at both levels, including planning and development services, as well as some road and road maintenance costs as well. So as the mayor stated, we're really here to look through this regional governance review through three lenses. Do you want to keep things the way they are today? Do we want to look at the City of Brampton becoming a single-tier municipality, similar to Toronto, Ottawa, London, and Hamilton, which would also include taking on what's currently the regional services? Or do we want to amalgamate, which would mean some different configurations of bringing together the cities of Brampton, Mississauga, and the town of Calladon? The sessions like today is one way to help inform city councils' decisions. Another way, and the mayor's already spoke about this, is in the importance of collecting data, to ensure that the city's recommendation to the advisers is based on evidence and factual information. This is why, in parallel to public engagement, and thanks to motion moved by Mayor Brown and his colleagues at Regional Council, the chief administrative officers and the chief financial officers of all four municipalities, so that's Peel, Brampton, Mississauga, and Calladon, are working together to provide an independent financial analysis of the three options that we're talking about today. This analysis will provide a clearer picture of the true costs and the impact to municipalities. Having this full study with all partners at the table is important for this process to be fair and transparent to the taxpayers. Given the short window, we do not have this information today, however, we do expect that the analysis will be presented to Regional Council in the coming weeks, and we're hoping to be able to share with our city thereafter. Going into this approach, not only was the financial analysis important, but City Council also wanted to look at this review through a couple of different perspectives. First, it was important to ensure that there's no reduction in core services that are currently provided by the region of Peel, also to ensure that no financial costs, or again, finding those cost efficiencies, are found, and then also to ensure fairness to all affected municipalities. So to the last port, and this is again why you're here today, it's, "How can the City of Brampton and the residents and businesses have their say?" There's a couple of opportunities open for you. You can have your say directly with the province of Ontario. Next week, the two special advisers who've been appointed, Michael Finn and Ken Seeling, will be at the region of Peel headquarters. If you have had the opportunity to preregister and you receive confirmation, the advisers will be listening to questions and comments specifically for the region of Peel. They've also opened up an opportunity for you to provide a written submission. You can provide a written submission to regiengovreview@ontario.ca, as well as there's an online survey that the province is hosting. I'm not going to read the URL, it's going to be posted to our website, it's here in person, and also, I believe it's being posted to Facebook as well. As the mayor said, this is important, that the special advisers will be concluding their consultation on May 21st. And lastly, for the City of Brampton portion of the public consultation. There's a number of ways, and we believe that this is something that's going to be iterative, and this is something that's going to potentially be organic, and there may be further opportunities moving forward. First is the in-person Town Hall and the live streaming of this event today, as well as we're doing an online survey with a number of questions, open until May 13th, as well as the public can provide comments directly on our website through our online form. To access that, it's brampton.ca/regionalgovernmentreview. And as the mayor said, we have already hosted one telephone Town Hall on April 27th. So with saying that, now we'll move on to the most important part of this evening, which is hearing from you. To get things started, we do have a number of residents who have preregistered to ask questions, so in fairness to them, we're going to be inviting them one by one, as they, as we receive them, to answer their que, or to ask their questions, and the mayor and councillors may wish to provide some comments back. Then we will also, at that point, once we've exhausted that list, we'll open it up for other attendees in person, as well as the individuals who are writing questions through Facebook. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Lowell. We have some preregistered questions, and just a reminder, you can ask the questions from the front mic or the one at the, at the top of the stairs. So we're going to go through the preregistered questions, and then we'll open it up to the general public. Do we have Masood Khan here? I have registered to ask a question. I don't see Masood here. He shows up later, we'll get to him. Do we have James Law here? No, James Law. Sachith Jayasundara. Okay, first question. Or comment, or feedback, doesn't need to be a question.
Nice to see everybody here. It's my first time being in the council chambers, it looks very nice. I just had a ready comment, for the most part. Well, it may be a little political that this, it seems a little like the provincial government's kind of biased towards our area, all of a sudden, for some reason. But regarding this review, for certain services like ambulance and police and stuff, I think it's better, I think it is the efficient way that we're doing it. I don't see why people who've been here before have been dropped the ball so badly. I just don't like seeing, I like to have the three different cities as well, just because it gives like a nonpartisan political chamber for people to even like engage or gain experience, or stuff like that. So I think those opportunities would be gotten rid of if we become like a supercity, where you don't get to get the reach of like the individual. So that's my comment. Don't really have a question, but it's nice to see you, thank you for this.
Thank you for the feedback, thank you for being here. Gerlin Garcha, is Gerlin here? Okay, when Gerlin comes, we'll get to her. Akin Udintan, Akin. Okay. Karan Jat Batia? Who recently got an award from the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario?
Thank you, Mayor, for, and thirty councillors for letting the residents of Brampton, you know, having their say in this very important issue. So my question is to the mayor, that if the City of Brampton and the region of Peel, you know, if it's split, what will happen to the school boards? So will Brampton have its own school board? Because the majority of the student population within these three cities, Brampton, Mississauga, and Calladon, are within the Peel District School Board, so will Brampton have its own school board, or will it, you know, what will happen? Will it stay with the Peel District School Board, or will it create its own?
So, right now, the school boards are also set by the province, and so they've left no indication they're going to change the geography behind the school boards, but that could be something that flows afterwards, but at this point, the regional review doesn't include the school boards.
Okay. And, you know, it also affects our, like, our funding and our resources, because currently, you know, we're not getting our, the much funding that we require, the provincial government's cutting our funding, they're, you know, they're laying off so many teachers, so our funding's also being impacted. What's your say on that?
So I think that's a bit of a separate issue, but I know many of us have had concerns about the diminishment of provincial funding. Some of us around this table are regional councillors, and we learnt about the effects of the public health cuts in Peel-wide, just like the City of Toronto is facing that. It is a significant cost here in Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladon. A number of us attended the rally in terms of the cuts to education. I know Councillor Dillon was at one last week, Councillor Williams was at one in her area, and I know I attended and spoke at one with Councillor Vicente and Santos at Brampton City Hall, the 300 teachers who are, who are losing, and there was one today as well. And so, we have a lot of concern about the diminishment of provincial funding to key services, but I would say this review is focused on regional governance, not on cuts to provincial funding. That's a separate battle. Right now, we just want to get input from the citizens on other three scenarios being analyzed by the province. Keeping the status quo, a megacity, or an independent Brampton within a region of Peel, what this, what your preference would be?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
So, thank you, Mayor, for organizing this. We definitely need such a kind of session over here. Mississauga has already organized this kind of session. So, before a resident could say anything, it's most important that we know what are the implications, implications in terms of the advantages and disadvantages. So, only then we can take a informed and proper decision. So, I don't think so all the residents are aware, what could be the implications? So at, at this juncture, we first need to know the implications, both which are in favor of Brampton, which could be against Brampton.
So, good question, and the only analysis there is right now is the Deloitte report. We're doing a subsequent study by Ernst &amp; Young that will be a second opinion on the Deloitte numbers, but maybe this would be a good time to show you the slide from Deloitte. I'm going to ask the city clerk to put it on the screen. This was an analysis of the costs under the three scenarios. So as you can see, from a taxpayer perspective, the status quo is, is no additional cost, it's zero. If you look at dissolution, we're looking at about a billion-dollar price tag over 10 years, and if you look at amalgamation, it's over $600 million, an increased cost. And so, this gives you an analysis of what it means for taxpayers in Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladon. And once again, this was the January 2019 Deloitte report. If you've heard of different figures from Mississauga, they did a report in 2003 that the Deloitte report said was flawed for many reasons. It essentially said, "We can continue to share all the services, just not have any oversight over it," which is, keep the region the same, but not have anyone looking at it, so, which is a little bit of a peculiar way of going about it. This is based on the hard cost, if you were to have a dissolution, and the hard cost of a megacity, and the hard cost of keeping the same. So this is the most accurate information we have, have at the moment.
What I can see from the graph is that amalgamation, it's the green line, and the purple is the one which is for dissolution. So with the dissolution, we'll have a higher tax dollars coming on us.
Yes.
So that could be one of the implications, but this is just the implication related to the, to the, just the cost of the tax dollars, but there are other implications in terms of services, and the cost of the split itself will be there.
So the way the analysis was done by Deloitte was to look at the same service level. So the three scenarios are under the same service level, but you're right, you could always look at whether you want to diminish the service level, but that would be a decision of the new megacity, or the new independent municipality, or frankly, you could even look at an enhancement or diminishment of service levels under the status quo.
One thing which I was thinking, I don't know, but maybe it's, maybe it's a silly question, but we have 25 regional councillors combined together, Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladon. I believe 11 are from, from Mississauga. So if Brampton and Calladon have a unity in them, how can they pass a motion of getting separated?
So it's not up to the Regional Council, it's up to the provincial government? And the provincial government is making this decision regardless of what the region appeals recommendation is. They've asked us for input, but we are not the, the region of Peel is not the decision-maker.
So Calladon has also done their own homework like this?
The region of Peel Deloitte report was commissioned by the region, so it was funded by taxpayers in Mississauga, Brampton, and Calladon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the next question, we have an online question that Lowell just passed my way, maybe we could read that out, we'll, we will bring in online questions throughout this Town Hall. So, the first online question was from Hamad Suda. "Is it a good or bad thing for us to remain in the region?" Well, that's what we're asking your input on, and based on the numbers, we'd love to get your input. "What are the disadvantages of the three choices?" Well, one is financial, if you look at this chart, there's a financial disadvantage. "Who will make the final decision of whether we stay together in the region or not?" That's the provincial government, Premier Doug Ford, will be making that decision. "Brampton is doing well, why are we considering a change?" Well, that's, this has been instigated not by the City of Brampton, but it's been instigated by the province of Ontario. And trust me, I've said many times, I wish at Queen's Park they were spending time on issues like hallway medicine, gridlock. If someone asked me my top 100 priorities for the provincial government, regional governance review would not be on it, but once again, this is not our choice, this is initiated by the provincial government. We also have a question on, "How will the review affect Brampton for wastewater and wastewater, and what is the cost?" The water treatment center that has been built is in Mississauga, and so there could be a significant cost on Brampton if Mississauga was to walk away from the financial obligations. And I think this is a good information point, and maybe we can get our CEO to jump in here. I haven't given him the heads-up, but the pipes have been built into Mississauga, and because we're a growing community, those regional pipes haven't been expanded to the full extent in Brampton, and so it's sort of like agreeing to pay for the cost of dinner, and then when the bill comes, running away. And wastewater is an interesting component in this conversation, because we really have a state-of-the-art facility, but the pipes need to get throughout the region, and because we're a growing community, and Mississauga's grown out, it's actually our turn to really see some of those benefits, and I'm not sure if our CEO wants to add anything into that.
I will attempt to, thank you, Chair. So, the mayor is absolutely right. In terms of how the pipes were planned, they were only taken a certain distance, so there are some complications for Brampton's growth, and even more specifically, under a dissolution model, and we're only here considering Brampton, but it would have significant impacts on Calladon as well, because that servicing is not, those pipes don't go up into Calladon either. So, there are going to be some challenges and complications, looking at, how is it we're going to build it out? How is it we're going to allocate those costs? How is it we're going to allocate the debt associated to billing with that asset from the start? Are there any opportunity costs that we need to consider in terms of a dissolution model that allows us to consider, if we made this significant investment in Mississauga's growth at the time that they needed it, what, what did that mean for them to grow and evolve to where they are today? And what are we losing out on by not having that same kind of support when Brampton needs that continued investment and support under the current model? So those are things that we need to be looking at, and Ernst &amp; Young is evaluating further at some of the things we've asked them to look at.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Another question online was, "How will you be dividing fire and police services?" Well, fire is already divided, we have the Brampton Fire, the Mississauga Fire, and so it's already divided, it's not a regional service. How will you divide police services? Well, right now, the police headquarters is in Mississauga. In no world would we accept having a police headquarters in a different municipality. There's already, in my opinion, a bit of a Mississauga focus, we would want a Brampton focus, and so if you dissolve the region of Peel, it would really be changing what was a fair agreement before, and I can't imagine a scenario where an independent municipality would have a separate, would have their police force in a, in a, in a different municipality. And so, it would really cause problems with continuing the existing Peel Police. "How will the review outcome affect your property taxes?" Well, we have that screen still up. It would, dissolution would be a billion dollars in new taxes over 10 years, a megacity $600 million in new taxes, and so it would cause your taxes to go up. Thank you for those online questions, and please continue asking questions online. I know this is on Facebook Live, and we welcome... I know this is on Facebook Live, and we welcome input whether you're here in person or in your uh living room. Our next question is Sylvia Roberts. Who has one of the best attendance records, I'd say, in the city when it comes to city council.
I do have a reasonable attendance record. For the water and wastewater, aren't those largely funded by development charges? Which is why the regional government was having panic attacks when the the provincial government was looking at, why don't we look at getting rid of uh wa- water DCs? Isn't that where they're largely funded from?
So development charges do pay for a a number of municipal uh services. Um but frankly, if there was ever a notion that we were going to divide, we would have had that water treatment plant built in in Brampton.
It's a bit hard to move that kind of stuff away from where your outlet is. Um so I the I found that the reason why Mississauga does not want to divide the water is, as you'll remember, the region proposed substantially increasing water rate, I believe it was six percent or something like that. Not quite remember, sure on the numbers, but you it is it reasonable to remember that they were proposing them going up above inflation? So the reason for that is because Mississauga's pipes are built out. They're not building new pipes. All the new pipe in the ground is going to be replaced, is going to be from replacement, and that's expensive. Most of Brampton's infrastructure is new because the city was built in the last twenty years effectively. So those new pipes, the water rates they're paying, are going to help pay for the maintenance and rebuilding of pipes in Mississauga. That's why they don't want to split it. So in terms of water rates, if you actually split it up and you had one body doing the water with it selling the water to two different water uh utilities. But what happened is Brampton's rates would go down and Mississauga's rates would skyrocket. The reason why they seem to want to do this, and the reason why they seem very desperate, is their city government has affected their uh the city government has effectively come back to the council saying, we're out of money, we're broke. Well, how does that happen? They've deferred so much maintenance that at this point, they're spending ninety-six million dollars to replace infrastructure. They should be spending three hundred and fifty million dollars. They're effectively running a quarter-billion-dollar-a-year deficit. That's why they want to split. They're desperate for any money they can find because they don't want to have to raise property tax by three percent a year for the next two decades. It's important to know when you're negotiating, why someone is negotiating something. And the answer is because Mississauga desperately needs the money, and that's why they're completely unwilling to look at Brampton getting any share of the regional assets because they don't have the money to actually pay Brampton back. But the problem is, if you stay with Mississauga, they're going to try to keep regional rates down as low as possible in order so that they can keep their tax tax up without the bill going up. But as you remember, the police, for example, they need four hundred million dollars in capital costs. And at this regional review, they're like, why do you need twenty million dollars this year for capital cost? Which is much less than a tenth of four hundred over ten years. It it just, and they're like, well, why can't it be fifteen? They want to further backload it because they're not thinking about the future. They're desperate to do this so that they don't have to make property taxes skyrocket. At some point, you have to look at a relationship. It's if your spouse has run up a hundred grand in credit card debt from gambling, are you sure you don't want to leave? Or I mean, yes, you put a lot of work into the relationship, but at some point, you have to cut your losses.
Okay, and so uh which which scenario would you prefer of the three?
Well, between Mississauga doing this because they have enormous amounts of money that they're probably going to try to put on the region if we stay, and Callaghan seems to think the region's going to build us a monorail for transit. I I I'm literally not kidding. They act, the mayor actually suggested that on how do you build a trans system in Callaghan because they wanted it? The mayor actually suggested a monorail because Disneyland does it, and it's cheap and efficient. This is insane. You've got one person who is, I have no idea what Callaghan's thinking about a monorail, and Mississauga's broke. Do you want to stay with them? I'm not sure the answer is, I'm not sure it's good for Brampton to stay. And we don't know how Mississauga's reactions are going to go on that. Because the region didn't go, did the regional review go over Mississauga's city books, or did it go over just the region's books?
Okay, thank you, uh Sylvia. Our next question, we have registered Siva Sivanathan. Is Siva here?
Hi, I'm just waiting for you, Mayor, so is it okay if I pass?
Yeah, well, we can, whenever you're ready, um you can, we can get back to you. Um so now we're op- open questions. If anyone in the audience want to ask a question or make a comment. Uh we're taking note of all the responses so that we can share it um with the provincial government. Um so state your name, uh and and if you're a Brampton resident, uh and then we'll uh we'd love to hear your feedback.
Yes, so my name is Curtis Trent. I um been a resident of Brampton for over thirty years. I did my schooling here, uh did college here, high school here, so I've seen the growth of the city. Um I've seen the 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 benefits and I've seen, and I reviewed the the Deloitte report. First thing I want to say about the report is um if 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 Brampton was a part of the original report, I just want to see why would we want to do another report? That would be just a question I want to ask. If Brampton was consulted with the Deloitte report, in a why would we want to spend the money again to do another report? Which is gonna, because it's the same books they're going to look at, it's not going to be different books. Is there a different scope that they're going to assess, or?
It was, it was really to satisfy uh Mississauga. When the Deloitte report came out, it really um called into question everything Mississauga had been saying. The report specifically said the numbers that Mississauga were using, which were dated from two thousand and three, uh were false. Uh and so Mississauga, having their entire argument um essentially uh uh demolished by the Deloitte report, wanted um a second opinion. And uh now we've had the CEOs from the three municipalities and the region appeal agree on a term of reference. And we hope um this will cause us to use one set of numbers. Um you can have reasonable conversation when you agree on the baseline. Um but you're right, I suspect the Ernst &amp; Young report may have similar findings to the Deloitte report. Uh but this was really at the instance of Mississauga, who were shocked by the findings of of cost um associated with their desired goal.
So that's good. So from, just to record, I'm always believing in a stronger Brampton and a stronger region. And uh with that, I just want to say I I'm supporting, you know, us staying with the with the with the with the region appeal. Um but I don't want to, I want to suggest that with the mindset that our youth programs won't be affected by it, you know. Um also, our seniors, uh citizens' programs will not be affected, and also want to keep our city safe. So I also believe that we there 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 are possibilities for maybe some efficiencies that we could build into the system to make some improvements. Um so I think if we can make those improvements, I don't think there's a reason why we couldn't, why we they shouldn't stay. But at the same time, we should look for opportunities for improvements uh on costs, but at the same time, don't coddle our our service any further. That's what I, that's my opinion on it.
And and to say that we want to keep the status quo doesn't preclude improving uh uh the the region. And so I think that's an important thing to consider as well. Efficiencies um and a better functioning uh region is something that I think would be desired if the status quo were were to continue. I know one of my grievances and this council's grievances has been a representation. Mississauga has eleven votes on regional council, and we have uh seven. Despite the fact that Brampton is almost the same size as Mississauga now, despite the fact that Brampton will surpass Mississauga in size because their population has stagnated, and Brampton's population is still uh increasing at a rapid uh rate. So imagine when we get into a scenario where Brampton has a larger population, but doesn't have the same representation. And so if anything, one of the grievances should be coming from Brampton, that we don't have representation by population.
Well, let us know what we can do to improve on us, we can get more representation. Thank you very much for your time, and I really appreciate you putting this uh phone hall together. Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Bill Dolahan. I've known Brampton since nineteen sixty. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-five. And there is a door that has not been opened, and I don't know why, and it has to do with the Constitution. You know, you're talking about maybe appeal region is dated, well, maybe the Constitution is dated. Because it gives the province powers to over municipalities, over people who live in places, and they have no concern about those people who live there. They don't have to. They're aloof, they're different, they're far. So uh you know, I'm just want to say, I wish someone, never did, no one opened it during the great kerfuffle with the formation of the GTA. No one opened it with the great kerfuffle about the reduction of the Toronto City Council from fifty or twenty-five. You know, it, there were challenges, but they got nowhere because of the Constitution. And again, here we are with the province waving its power over municipalities, large cities. That is not suitable anymore. I lived in Chicago. Chicago got a charter which exempted it from the laws of the state. I haven't heard of such a thing in Canada. Toronto should have a charter. And then it wouldn't be overruled by Pro- the Ontario every time it turns around. And this is what's going on. We have a province that has too much power over too many large cities. And I wish someone would open the door on the Constitution. I know it's not easy to change that, but uh it is something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you for uh the input. Any uh advice on the three scenarios being analyzed?
We should stay as we are.
Okay, thank you. Uh and the question was about um uh whether there should be a constitutional challenge. Um I would note uh that uh um big city mayors, uh for a long time, have argued that there should be three levels of government, not uh the current arrangement where municipalities, according to the Constitution, are creatures of the province. And so a province can have a legal battle with um the federal government, and you you're not sure who's going to win that legal battle. But because municipality is not an official order of government, rather they are creatures under the Constitution, it diminishes the legal power of municipalities. I would note that during the uh current premier's um uh intervention in Toronto, the city did take the province to court uh and attempted to do a constitutional challenge. What ended up happening is the premier, uh in nineteen eighty-two, when the Constitution was amended, they gave the provinces a power called the notwithstanding clause, which means they could override the courts if uh they so desired. The premier was so um determined on his intervention in the city of Toronto, he actually applied the notwithstanding clause, which is only meant for national emergencies. That was the original uh creation of that clause. In the end, despite the threat that he was going to use it, he did not have to use the notwithstanding clause because the courts ultimately ruled that his changes and intervention in Toronto were constitutional, that it's within the Constitution, municipalities are creatures of of the province. There was some hopes uh at the time, there was pleas to the Prime Minister to intervene um and to maybe change the Constitution that would not allow this to happen. Um and the Prime Minister at the time said um he was not interested at this time in changing the Constitution. Uh and so it is municipalities cannot initiate a change to the Constitution. It happens at the first minister's table and requires seven of ten provinces to agree, representing over fifty percent of the Canadian population. And so would I love for the Constitution to recognize municipalities, of course. But I would just warn, it is a a difficult process, and as we've seen in past attempts to change the Constitution, uh other issues tend to yeah get interjected, making it very difficult. The last two attempts to change the Canadian Constitution under then-Prime Minister Maruni uh were unsuccessful. It initiated on one topic, and then everyone else, every other province brought in their grievances, and it became a very difficult, arduous process that ultimately was unsuccessful. Um but it's important to look at this from every perspective and see what angles we have as municipalities to protect our interest. And so I I appreciate the the feedback. Um anyone else with a question? Oh, we got two Facebook questions. Um how would taxes increase for the average household in dissolution? Well, the answer, it would increase significantly, a billion dollars over over ten years. A billion dollars, and uh you can't look at it per resident, you'd really have to look at it per household. And per household, you're looking at a pretty significant cost. If Brampton were to split from the region, how long, how how long would that take to implement? Well, as we've seen what happened in the city of Toronto, the province uh put in their changes mid-election. So in a span of almost two months, the change happened. And so normally, it would happen over a number of years. That's what happened in the mid nineteen nineties. But it is legal for the changes to happen rapidly as well. Ultimately, the timeline would be set by the province of Ontario. So those were the two online questions, and once again, we encourage you to put in your questions. We'll answer them to the best of our abilities, or simply share with us your opinion. We're keeping track of all the all the input we're getting, so we can include this in our submission to the province of Ontario. Um next question, is there a member of the audience that'd like to come forward? Come on forward. And if you want the next question, you can line up uh behind, and we can uh get all the questions in.
Uh hi, uh my name is Dallas Conley. And my question is, uh back in nineteen seventy-four, Brampton and Bramley merged. So do you think, and you see how that has made the city of Brampton that merger? Do you think if all three cities merged, how the, in fifty years, how different it can be? Like, all three cities together, how big a powerhouse it can become?
So for advocates of a mega city, that's one of the arguments they make, is that it would make, it would make the city appeal the third largest city in Canada, only behind Montreal and Toronto. And with Montreal's growth rate stagnated, appeal would end up the second-largest city in Canada in a in a short period. Um there are advantages and disadvantages, and that's one of the uh people that have advocated for a mega city. That's one of the uh advantages they've articulated. So uh would you like us to put you down under that category?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think.
Well, thank you for being here. And I would note, it is National Youth Week um that Counselor Santos uh highlighted this week at around the council table. And so it's great to have young people involved in this discussion as well. Frankly, the decision that is made on regional governance will affect you more than anyone else. And I applaud any young person that comes forward to participate. Next question.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um members of the public. Firstly, I'd like to just give a little bit of recognition to a Brampton entrepreneur, um D-minded. So Brampton Proud um is something that I believe in, and I think keeping Brampton and its distinct identity is important. Um but also, as a business owner, I think there are efficiencies that can be sought. So this is uh something that's important, and I think this is an exercise that hopefully council can uh get some answers. Uh some of the gentlemen had said, there are a lot of questions uh that need to be answered. From my perspective, a lot of times, there is duplication. Anyone that has dealt with city and regional issues, uh in particular, um certain departments, there could be efficiencies that could be sought. Uh and I think most people that have actually uh experienced that, we could have amalgamation of departments, perhaps, uh that's something to to consider. Uh but the identity of um all these cities and the town, uh I think is important to maintain. So how we um grow and sustain uh good growth and efficiencies, I think needs to be also considered. Just as important is maintaining that identity and the culture that we've established over hundreds of years. So for me, I think the the disillusion is respectfully silly. I think that does not work, that separation. Uh anyone that has uh unfortunately gone through a divorce realizes there's a cost to that. And 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 I do applaud uh Mr. Mayor and Council for recognizing that. Is that that billion-dollar-plus, um if they so choose to want to split, uh I think that they'll have to uh respectfully pay for that split uh through the courts. Uh even if, even if the province chooses to go that direction, I think that's something that uh would be muddied up in courts for decades to come because there are costs that have been borne by our taxpayers uh over thirty years as they have grown, as has been just, has been said. So anyway, for me, it's 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 staying as is or an amalgamation hybrid. Uh I think that's something to 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 consider, that there are efficiencies that can be sought, but our culture and our identity are important to be maintained.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for your feedback. I would just note that Counselor Santos passed me a a note which said uh to remind residents that in terms of finding efficiencies, um in December, this council voted for a value-for-money uh review being done by KPMG and a core uh services uh delivery review. And so looking for those efficiencies on a municipal level, we are already uh full steam into that uh review. On a regional level, in terms of duplication of departments like planning, that's something that could be looked at if you're looking at efficiencies under the status quo.
HR, finance, all those types of departments that, I mean, are looking at similar. HR, finance, all those types of departments that, I mean, are looking at similar things throughout the cities.
So we'll put you down in the category of the status quo, but looking for efficiencies. And councillor Santos wants to add a word in?
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to highlight, I'm not sure if folks in the audience noticed today, but we were recognized in the city of Brampton as being one of the best places to live in the country. Okay, so yeah, for sure. So when it comes to our identity as a city, certainly, we are carving a niche for ourselves.
Good point. An interesting aspect of that article is it talked about some of the attributes of Brampton. Sometimes when you live in the city, you don't necessarily realize some of the advantages you have. But it looked at things like a variety in culinary options or the proximity of recreation. And as someone who's traveled to every community in Ontario, I can tell you, we are very lucky in terms of the great choices we have. No one can ever say Brampton is a boring city. Brampton is vibrant, Brampton is diverse, Brampton is the world within a small area. And so there are things we're very proud of. And that's why I always love seeing those Brampton Proud t-shirts. So why don't we take our next question?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the mayor and members of council for having this consultation today. I think there's also another aspect of it that is probably on the top of everybody's minds.
And just for the record, we'll note that this is Cody Vacher.
Cody Vacher, I didn't think I would need an introduction, but okay. Sorry for being a little bit full of myself there, but sometimes you gotta do. Think of the social services that would be impacted. Think of, you know, affordable housing. Think of children's aid as something that, you know, I've been the personal beneficiary of. Think of all of the social services, not just, you know, the taxes that are going to skyrocket, the services that would decline, but the access to social services that could ruin people's lives. And I wish that the premier, and if he was listening today, I would ask him to just take that into account. You know, he said he was for the people and, you know, it doesn't really seem that way anymore. So I'm for keeping everything the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cody, we'll put you down in that category. I'll note councillor Harkeerat Singh is with us here as well today. Thank you, Harkeerat. Next question. Oh, we got an online question? Oh, from the telephone town hall. Brampton has high insurance rates, will this change our structure? Well, insurance rates are set by the province of Ontario. And there was a proposal to end geographical discrimination in insurance rates. The province is saying they're entertaining it. What it allows insurance companies to do is to charge more based on where people live in their postal code. In Brampton, we've always felt that that's not fair, that the insurance companies have said they need to charge more when there's fraud. Well, frankly, that's their responsibility to have their own fraud departments, not the easy route where you just charge everyone more. We've long advocated that the loophole for insurance companies to charge more based on the postal code is wrong. And we're hopeful that the province is now saying that this is being reviewed. Two MPPs, Parm Gill and Garatin Singh, have put forward bills to this effect and the government is saying that it's going to be changed. It was signaled again in the budget that it's going to be changed and we are watching carefully in hope that it will change. Whose idea was it to break up? What does Brampton council feel about it? Well, the review was initiated by the province and Brampton council, I think, has significant reservations, but we're waiting for the public's input before we make a formal submission. How would a mega-city be governed? Would it be an election by council and a structure would be created by the province? Is it true that Mississauga would owe us if they split? We're looking into getting a legal opinion, but based on our contributions, I feel very strongly that Mississauga would have a significant debt to the city of Brampton. And once we have a legal analysis, we'll share that with the public as well. Those were the questions from our telephone town hall. We weren't able to get to on that town hall that was widely attended. And we're going to put a summary up on the screen of a summary of the tele-town hall feedback for those that weren't able to participate that may want to. Are there additional questions? You're welcome to come to the microphone. And if you want to come, just come and line up at the microphone and you're welcome to ask your question. Remember to state your name.
Hi, my name is Harpreet. My question for you, Mr. Mayor. Half of the Brampton population is, of course, a woman, the female population. My question is related to the women resources or the community services. As a ground zero, I have personally seen there are so many problems the women faces, like the domestic violence and child abuse, girl-child abuse. We need some more resources to help those kind of victims in the society. If we split, what will happen to those women or those girls?
Okay, great, great question. And obviously, this year, we've already had two high-profile tragedies that were involved in cases of domestic violence. Regional council added 55 new police officers this year to the Peel region police force in hopes that we can have faster response times and respond with severity to those that breach our collective sense of safety. If you split and have two police forces, that's two chiefs, two managements. It could ultimately lead to less funds for frontline policing. And so I think there are concerns on a policing front of what it would mean for the region appeal. But those are, that's part of the conversation we're having today on why we want to get your feedback.
And it's just my suggestion that we have a separate line or a public line for the women help line so that, you know, women can, in need, can talk freely to the city or people and, you know, solve their problems.
Okay, that's a good feedback and I appreciate you raising that.
And we need more social workers, you know, who goes to their houses and relate to their problems and solve their problems because the ground reality is very severe. You know, women always face the problems in a silence and feel the pain. And, you know, no one is there to solve their problem.
And one thing that we've advocated as a region is we don't get our fair share when it comes to social services. If you look at the per capita funding, we are the most underfunded in the province of Ontario. And it's why we've been, regional council now for a number of years has been making their fair share envelope for social services a real advocacy point for the region. Ultimately, the local MPPs get to set that budget. And if you have an opportunity, if you're concerned about social services and the level we have in Peel, make sure to raise that with your local MPP as something you'd like them to advocate for.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, there's a Chinese proverb that I've learned that says, "When the lips are gone, the teeth are exposed to the cold." And the reason why I say that is because of Brampton, from the way I'm looking at it, if it was to merge, it still, and become a part of the city of Peel, it's still vulnerable to some of the risks that I've seen in Toronto where you almost have like what I call an indirect, nice redlining Canadian style, where certain vulnerable parts of Toronto are neglected while downtown Toronto got more support. And that is the danger to Brampton. Once again, if we were to go the other way and separate without a plan, as you said, it would be more expensive. That is something that sticks in my mind because the question that I have to ask is, yes, Mississauga says they want to separate, but I'm wondering if they want to separate from what I call those people. And those people are people, I'm one of those people indirectly because Brampton is very diverse, right? And that is something that is also sticking in my head because I've lived in the United States as well. And I've seen what happens when cities say, "Oh, we don't want to really work with those people." And then they separate. And guess what? That's where you create all those problems and all those ghettos. And in people's minds, that's a nice coded word for saying, people looking like me and some of the councillors here. And that's why personally, I think that, yes, it has been mentioned, we do need to find efficiencies and we can. And that is the advantage of our diversity in and of itself, that we can leverage our people in unique ways that compared to as the United States when they were complaining about people that come from, since there's young people here, asshole countries, while they're saying that they come from the asshole countries, while they're indirectly turning their country into one. We don't want to turn our province into one and we don't want our city to turn into one because we have the, with new leadership and everything, we have the ability to turn our city into an example of what great minds and collaboration, you know, when great minds come together, we could see beautiful things happen. That's just what I want to say. So I'm for staying put and building on what we have with our unique character.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, for giving us an opportunity. While I'm very grateful to the previous mayors and councils, we needed the change and we are, the fate befell on US shouldn't be fall on our Ontario speciality. And we see that very unfortunately, we are not having the support. A city like Brampton or other cities similar, not having that. Very unfortunately, how, you know, there are noticeable. I have been living in this city for 35 years. I have business last 22 years, employees working. And four of my children had gone to elementary school, middle school, high school, and worked in the city and then moved out, some of them. So we have seen what is happening. And first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your good service and noticeable. I'm not flattering you, if something is bad, I'm the first person to voice that. Having said that, parents, you know, why should we? We like to remain and improve our services and help to the people. From university, that has been deprived lately. Hospital is getting delayed. Everything has been controlled by, you know, the rest. When we have the ammunition, when we have the help right here, why we can improve with the resources that we have. And parents are helpless, hopeless, powerless with their mental health. You know, we need to address our youth. Education is the most important than anything else. And we should understand, you see, parents need to know, we can, instead of looking for, everybody is stressed out, now try and stress out. Mayor just said that we have everything right here in the city. We need to educate the children. Where do you go? What do you do? Whom do you relate to? They are, they don't know what to do, when to do, where to do, how to connect. Probably we have the resources, but they don't know where to get the resources, how to get the resources. That education need to be simplified and given to the, you know, the citizens. That just need to be, in the past, that's what didn't happen. At least now we have an efficient team. We could execute all that, you know? Every house is, you know, you come here, "Oh, I'm unable to do that, I'm unable to do this." Where does it start? Home front. If you can repair the home front, the whole front will be fine. This is, whether it's an immigrant or people who are here, same situation. And go to downtown Brampton, high-density development. We, lately, there are some actions taking place. You go to Nelson Street and George Street, that corner, you know? People feel very uncomfortable when they get down from the bus, you know? It, what are we representing? Why have we not addressed this? Of course, there is something being done. We know, go train, session. When people feel, come there, feel that safety, you know? And all these things can be, we can remain, we have the resources. I personally think we needed that boosting which we have got right now. We should not be controlled by if Mayor can go out and brought all these good stuff recently, and you guys know that. And we can still continue to do that. And the Bramptonians are never scared. I've seen in 35 years, tough times do not last, tough people do, and they have lasted long. And we should be proud to be Bramptonians. And thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your service. Thank you, council.
Okay, Siva, so should we put you down then for continuing the region appeal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have another online question from Nina Chopra. Previous years, we saw that Brampton's development is way behind that of Mississauga's development. If all three cities merged to a single city, we predict that all three cities would get equal funds of development. Let's merge and make the biggest and strongest city. So that's a feedback from Nina that we get more development. Okay. Are there any other questions? Questions or feedback?
I have two questions. Firstly, maybe I'm the only one for dissolution so far? Yeah, my, and let me explain my reasons. But my reasons is based on that Mississauga is bigger than Brampton in terms of population, right? Is that right, sir?
Mississauga currently is bigger than Brampton in population.
Right. So in terms of services, because we have less population, our cost of services would be a lot lower than Mississauga, right? Right, that's my reasoning. Because if we're looking at efficiencies, we will be saving more if we operate our own, except for the police services and the regional roads. If all the services would be downloaded to our own, we can save more instead of contributing to the Peel because we have lesser populations. So ambulatory services, housing services, public services, we all go down because we have lesser population, right?
So the forecast is Brampton's population will surpass Mississauga's. And the regional infrastructure that's been built is built where the population is at the time. So we've already paid for the regional infrastructure in Mississauga because they're built out. Now it's the region's turn to pay for that same infrastructure in Brampton. And so the cost of paying for that services right now, it's, Brampton for years contributed to subsidizing the infrastructure in Mississauga. And now it's Mississauga's turn for regional roads and water and pipe maintenance.
Yeah, I agree with that. So they still will repay us once we dissolve.
No.
No? Oh. Yeah, okay, that's another problem there. Because efficiency will be dear more for us because we're smaller. That's my argument. And I'm thinking they will still have to, because we subsidized them before, they have to subsidize us now, right? So that's my thinking. And that reason I'm for dissolution is because they want to split, so let them split. Why would you leave with somebody who doesn't want to leave with you? This is the second reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the feedback. Are there any other additional questions? Oh, we have another online question. Why is this decision being made now and not before the next municipal election? The timetable is set by the province of Ontario. This is initiated by the government of Premier Ford. It is not, the timelines and the initiation of this process, it wasn't started locally.
Oh, Mayor, so my question is that the region of Peel has been, you know, it was founded around 40 years ago. At that time, they didn't, Mississauga didn't have a problem. Now, why is it now that they have a problem? Why is it that before, everything was going fine? All the three cities were okay, they were all happy. Why is it now that Mississauga specifically has a problem of going out? And I know that if we, if we are divided, Brampton is capable enough of going forward. We have a great city council, we have a great mayor. And you also mentioned that, you know, Brampton's population's going up. Every day, new immigrants are coming. Every day, new immigrants are coming. The, the federal government's not putting any stop to this, the, and everybody wants to come to Brampton. They are, they're not putting, uh, the immigrants, they're not putting them into other cities. Everybody wants to come to Brampton. Why? And why is Mississauga, you know, taking this decision now? If it wanted to, it could have done that in the forty years.
I think forty years ago, uh, the logic was Brampton residents would help build infrastructure in Mississauga, but now that it's their turn to help subsidize infrastructure in Brampton, uh, it sparked a, a change in heart. I think councillor Plessy, uh, uh, wants to add in, uh, a response, and so councillor Plessy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess just being, uh, the councillor, or one of the regional councillors, uh, I and councillor Maderos returning, uh, that was at the region, well, the previous four years, i- this isn't anything new. Mississauga's always wanted to kind of, uh, uh, go it alone. Um, and then, so, so just to, to reference your one question there, but on the, on the next one about our population, um, so the province dictates to the region how much, uh, the region appeal is going to grow. Uh, the region then determines who's going to take that population. Mississauga has, um, obviously the majority of the vote at, at the region, um, and Brampton was therefore, Brampton therefore took the majority of that population with the assumption that one day, um, you know, growth coming from the south, uh, and that's typically the way we plan, uh, development in, uh, and communities, um, would eventually catch up to, to Brampton with the ratio of, uh, uh, employment to residential. So just to, uh, to talk a little bit about your, about your question regarding the population.
And, uh, one quick question, the last question that I have, is that we did so much joint infrastructure with, uh, Mississauga, uh, and, you know, our resources are limited. We're not getting enough, uh, resources from the province. So with the high rates of population, you know, what, uh, we don't, we don't have that many resources. What are we going to do? Because, uh, what are we going to do? We did so much infrastructure, will we get our money back? And why don't we have that much resources?
And it's one of the reasons we'd be doing a, uh, getting a legal opinion to show that Brampton wants to protect its, uh, position. Um, I see we also have councillor Dylan that wanted to add in, um, a perspective as well. Uh, so councillor Dylan.
Yeah, I just wanna just, uh, appreciate that, uh, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, really interesting hearing all the questions today and, uh, unfortunately I have to run soon, so I appreciate, uh, the time you've given just to give some remarks as well. I, I just wanna make note that, um, if you've been following the situation, you've seen essentially that the municipalities are being pitted against one another. I don't, uh, think that's very healthy. I think we've had a proud tradition in Peel, uh, of working together. And so, uh, I'd like to see that continuing going forward. But I think if you've seen, uh, the difference between Mississauga and, uh, Brampton is we've taken an evidence-based approach. And, uh, so we haven't taken an official position as they have. We said, let's, uh, make the most logical decision and let's do what's best for the taxpayer at the end of the day. And I think, uh, you know, we've worked very closely, uh, with them. Uh, there was a report out, uh, to appease them. We're doing a, another report, uh, as well. And so, uh, we're hoping at the end of the day, uh, Mississauga residents and Brampton residents, uh, don't necessarily put civic pride, uh, over, uh, or politics as I think Mississauga councillor has done, over what's best for, uh, the residents of Peel, Mississauga and Brampton. And so, uh, I've heard so many, uh, really good comments today. I'm very proud that our residents were able to come out, uh, and, uh, and I think that the, the middle of this month, our comments are due to the province. So hopefully the best, uh, decision will be made by then. But, uh, I can reassure you, this council and our staff, uh, have done everything, uh, for the best interest of our taxpayer and our residents.
And in conclusion, I would like to say that, you know, we should all keep unity. All the three, um, city, uh, the region of Peel should be united and that everyone, you know, should, uh, be united as they were and not split. Because if we split, nobody is, nobody's benefit, nobody's in benefit. We are all in, any perspective, we are all in loss. So the benefit of the residents, if the council wants, if the region of Peel wants to look at from the benefit of the residents, I would strongly recommend them that they should stay united and stay the way they are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Geranjot. We have a few more questions, uh, online. We have Wendy Latell. Who will be making the ultimate decision, when the city splits or stays, the people or the province? Uh, the province is making the final, um, decision. Um, and we're told that they'll be making that decision by August. And so in terms of timeline, they've said they're gonna try to make their decision before the AMO conference, which is this August. Another online question, Alvin Harris. Can the mayor explain the Deloitte report? Why is the cost of amalgamation higher than the status quo? Uh, we had Deloitte present their findings at the region, uh, appeal council, and many asked that same question. And they said, one of the reasons is we have existing contracts that are for specific municipalities, and so there are costs to canceling contracts. There's also, you know, you've got city of Brampton buses, you've got city of Brampton letterhead, and essentially what you're doing is you're essentially having to change the branding of the entire city. Um, there may be some, uh, not only employment, but contracts that need to be altered. And so, um, the estimated cost of early termination, um, and of rebranding, uh, and an assortment of other costs associated with this was six hundred million over, uh, ten years. Um, that was the Deloitte report. I would note, we're getting a second opinion from Ernst and Young, but I would note, originally the mega-city in Toronto was supposed to be a cost-saving. Afterwards, it ended up costing more. Um, there are sometimes costs that are not anticipated, um, but once again, there are advantages and disadvantages of being a larger city. Our goal here today is not to prejudge the city's input, but to give you an opportunity to share your submissions before we make an official submission to, uh, the province. Those were, um, additional online comments. Um, are there any other additional questions or comments before we wrap up? Okay.
I wanna make one more comment to, addition to the other two about the accessibility of, you know, political experience and all that. Um, the, the aspect of the Brampton proud and their identity. So I'm really for keeping it the way we have it, but after hearing other people talk, I'm also a little inclined if we just separate and have our own city, just 'cause, not gonna lie, but not everybody in Brampton is that proud of being Brampton. I think there's room for improvement to get people to go out. I personally have been making an effort to go out to events and stuff. Went to the Rose Theatre, a great place to check out. Uh, went to a hockey game, Brampton proud. Pretty sure the Beast Hockey Club will be happy for their plug. Um, but yeah, so even if we separate and not become a major, major city, I think we can do a lot more to promote our Brampton identity in different ways. I'm pretty sure you can think of ways. I don't have any right now, but just another.
Come on down.
So just have one more, one more, uh, point in relation to, I just wanna make a note on the, uh, insure, high insurance.
Just wanna make another point on the high insurance, uh, from one of our MPPs. One of the, the bill that's going through is, uh, Bill forty-two. So that's, I just wanted to make sure, if anybody wants to take a look at that, see what's the content of it is, uh, Bill forty-two that's going through right now, so.
Thank you. Um, councillor Plessy asked me to remind everyone here, uh, today that if you want to have additional input, we have two government MPPs that will be part of the decision-making process for this, and that's Amarjot Sandhu and Prabhmit Sekheria. If you want to, uh, get them, um, uh, if you have a strong opinion that you want them to hear and pass on to the premier, you can do that. If you're upset about the way the process is being undertaken, you can let one of the opposition MPPs know, so they can raise it, uh, in the legislature with Sarah Singh, Kevin Yard, or Garatin Singh. Um, there, there are provincial representatives and make sure you let them know, uh, about your opinions as well. Um, sir?
One thing I've been wondering about and, and, uh, I figure I wanna ask it, is the Deloitte report. Will you tell us how that came about? The way it was reported is it was some doubt about who knew what and who did what to get that report done? And that the mayor of Mississauga was left out in the, in the cold and not involved.
So, um, the mayor of Mississauga, I think, was, um, uh, a little bit embarrassed by the fact that Deloitte report called into question the figures that Mississauga had been using. Um, it called them flawed, uh, and went through an analysis of why those two thousand and three figures were no longer accurate. The report was commissioned by the regional chair, Nando Yanika. Um, the Mississauga councillors asked if it was within his legal authority to do so. The regional appeal, um, uh, lawyer said that it falls within the bylaws, that the clerk is, uh, that the chair is allowed to commission, um, a financial analysis. Um, I first learned about it because when Mississauga started going on about numbers, I called the region appeal, and I called our offices here in Brampton. I said, share with me any analysis that was done. Um, and so I got, uh, all the facts from the city of Brampton and the region appeal. Um, the chair had said at the time, if the Mississauga mayor had asked for the report, she would have been given it. It was being provided to anyone that asked. I happened to get it first because I asked first. Um, I thought it was only prudent before I spoke to the media that I gather any financial analysis that was undertaken at either the city of Brampton or the region appeal, um, level. Um, the, the mayor of Mississauga was upset that I had received it, um, prior to her. So that's the history behind it, and the work was commissioned by, uh, the chair of the, of the, of the region appeal, Nando Yanika, who happens to be a thirty-year member of Mississauga City Council. So, uh, if anything, he has a long history, uh, on the Mississauga side of the equation, but I think he's been equitable and fair as he's, uh, um, held the chair position a- at the region.
Hello, my name is Sylvia again. Um, so a gentleman previously brought up a potential constitutional amendment. It was mentioned that you'd need seven provinces, and generally that's true, but the constitution specifically includes a clause that allows it so that for a province-specific amendment, you only need the province and the federal government to agree. And Toronto is actually pushing for that. So it might seem like it's a long way away to the next provincial election, but drafting a city charter actually takes a substantial amount of time and consultation because it's effectively a city constitution. So if the city decided to move forward and try to make it a constitut- to make it a provincial election issue next time, and we wanted to have a charter to be doable within that government's mandate, you would need to start now. It's a case of Toronto has been talking about it for a while, and Chicago had been mentioned. Chicago actually spent decades lobbying and created a charter before anyone had said that they would do it, and went through extensive public consultation to ensure that when they finally got a chance to implement it, it was what the people wanted and it would work quite well for their city. So that may be worth looking into.
Okay, thank you, Sylvia, for the, uh, perspective. Um, we have a few more online comments. Um, Vidya Gautam. Uh, why not, uh, can we make the region of Peel into a mega-city of the future? That will solve the cost dissolution of the region appeal. The overall cost of the mismanagement of the region appeal, if any, will evaporate. There'll be no additional cost for regional councillors, uh, plus the duplicity of administrative services. Three ministas will be wiped out. How, how cool will, will the mayor be if he can say he found billions of dollars? That was the impact, input from Vidya. I would note that mega-city based on the Deloitte findings would cost six hundred million dollars more. It would not be a cost-saving. So that's a response to that question. Fabio wrote in, would there be a situation where city council, along with the voting public, elect to keep things the way they are? The province would choose to merge or separate the region anyway? There is not, um, right now, any scheduled referendum to give, uh, the people a say. Uh, I suppose, uh, that's something that could be looked at if, if we wanted to have our own, um, referendum. The province has not given, um, has not said they're open to that. Uh, they wanna make the decision, but, um, uh, I appreciate the feedback. Uh, additional comments from the Tella Town Hall. What will be the future of public health and shelters if we split from the region? A bigger ci- city means bigger and more out-of-control development. So those were two additional comments from the Tella Town Hall. Okay, um, seeing no more questions or feedback, I wanna really thank everyone for being here today, for being part, uh, of our, uh, in-person town hall. Um, to let you know, if you want to share additional in- input and you're at home and didn't want to share today or wanted to take some more time to think about it, there are still opportunities. You can go to brampton.ca backslash regional government review and share your opinion. Or you can submit a comment or question at brampton.ca backslash regional government review. All input will be considered and before the city makes our submission on May twenty-first. At the end of the day, the strongest cities are ones with an engaged democracy, where the citizens are involved. And, uh, by virtue of you being here today, it's because you care about your community. And on behalf of city council, I just wanna thank you for taking the time today. Uh, and we will keep the residents of Brampton, um, up to date as this, if there's any new developments, whether it's a new financial analysis or any updates from the province. But once again, thank you for being here today, and I hope everyone has a great weekend.